I'd like to call to order the December 14th, 2017 meeting of the Parker Planning Commission. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Are there any additions to or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Approval of the minutes from November 30th, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes from November 30th?
No, sir.
No.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve November 30, 2017 minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Dwayne, that we approve the minutes from the November 30th, 2017 meeting. Signify your approval by yes.
Yes.
Okay, we'd like to welcome the members of the public here. There's one item on the agenda tonight, the continuation of the site plan amendment for multiple family units in Stro Ranch. I understand that many members of the community continue to be concerned about the application. However, I ask that you respect the statements that are made by town staff, the applicant, and my fellow planning commissioners during the proceeding. It is important that the public hearing be conducted in a dignified and respectful manner. To this end, please do not clap, yell, boo. Make additional commentary from the audience or otherwise interrupt the proceedings. If the meeting cannot be held because of interruptions, the commission will make a motion and further deliberations will be held away from the council chambers. Before we begin, I'd like to make an announcement for our members in the audience and those on Facebook Live. We as sitting members take the role, responsibility, and duties of the Planning Commission seriously. When we as the Planning Commission review site plans, zonings, and other land use requests during a public hearing, the Planning Commission is sitting as a quasi-judicial body. For projects that are under review by the town, we are unable by state law to discuss matters of the project when approached by members of the public outside of a public hearing. This does not mean we are not engaged or interested in hearing from members of the public, quite the opposite. We encourage and appreciate public participation as a part of the public hearing process. The public hearing is where we listen to comments, concerns, technical analysis, and other information provided by town staff, the developer, and the public. This information, combined with the requirements of the Land Development Ordinance, state and federal laws, allows the Planning Commission to remain objective, fair, and balanced when making a recommendation or taking action. Simply put, the Planning Commission is required by law to remain impartial to ensure that each project, the developer, town staff, and overall community gets the due process it deserves. The project before us tonight was continued from our November 9th, 2017 meeting, where we listened to the comments and concerns from the public. And so we will now reopen the public hearing at 7:03. The purpose of this public hearing is to continue the November 9th, 2017 public hearing regarding a request for a site plan amendment for the Stro Ranch filing number one, amendment number two, lot five. The code only requires administrative review of site plan amendments, however, the planning director has chosen to push up this project to the Planning Commission because there is significant public interest in this project. As a reminder, this request is for the site plan amendment. Multifamily is a use by right on this property; this decision was made over 30 years ago. This is an amendment to an existing site plan approval from 1997. Two hundred and four units were approved as part of the existing Ironstone multifamily development, but the last phase was not constructed. The town does not regulate whether property owners sell or rent units, or what rents they decide to charge. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to determine whether the site plan amendment layout and design submitted meets the town's Land Development Ordinance, design standards, and engineering standard. At the November 9th, 2017 meeting, staff provided a presentation including, number one, details of the project, two, the criteria contained in the town code that must be considered by the Planning Commission, and three, a recommendation based on the analysis conducted by the staff. The applicant made a presentation in support of the application, and the Planning Commission heard public testimony from residents. At the end of the meeting, there were no other members of the public who wished to speak regarding this project. At that point, I closed public comment portion of the meeting. There will be no additional public comment tonight. Tonight, the Planning Commission will hear from staff regarding the four items that we requested further clarification on. Commissioners will then ask follow-up questions of staff and the applicant based on the information and public testimony provided at the November 9th, 2017 commission meeting. The commission will then deliberate and make a motion regarding this project. I will now ask town staff to present the additional information requested by the commission. Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and rest of the Planning Commission members. As the chairman just stated, at the November 9th hearing, we presented our information to you, and the motion to continue the hearing was made. Then, on November 30th, 2017, there was a Planning Commission member meeting. The Planning Commission outlined information that required additional clarification from staff or the applicant. This request for additional clarification is not considered new information. Rather, the additional clarification concerns comments or questions that were originally discussed during the November 9th, 2017 hearing. The requested clarification includes the following. So the first request was when the traffic study was completed. So the traffic study was conducted in March of 2017. The intersection counts were conducted on Wednesday, March 15th, 2017, and the daily roadway counts were conducted on Tuesday, March 28th, 2017. These counts were conducted for the entire day or 24 hours. Based on the Douglas County School District calendar, spring break was the week of March 20th through the 24th of 2017. One elementary school, Gold Rush Elementary, is listed as having a two-week spring break from March 20th through the 31st of 2017. Gold Rush Elementary is located north of Hess Road and east of Chambers Road within the Antelope Heights subdivision. Based on the above information, the traffic counts were not conducted during the spring break for the local schools in the area. The second question that was asked of staff was if any waivers or variances were granted. The town of Parker has issued no waivers or variances for this proposed project. This project is required to satisfy all requirements outlined within the Land Development Ordinance. The third question asked was regarding the open space and how the open space currently proposed compares to what was originally proposed. So the applicant is currently proposing a total of 37 percent, or 181, 258 square feet of open space on the property. For this portion of the original site plan, outlined in yellow on the right, the site plan included approximately 32 percent, or 154,237 square feet of open space. The proposed site plan amendment is proposing approximately 27,021 square feet additional open space. The fourth question was regarding Building Eight. Building Eight is located on the south side of the property. So there are two sections within the Commercial, Industrial, and Multifamily Design Guidelines that were approved in April of 2015, which deal with the placement of multifamily buildings adjacent to existing single-family residential. These sections include 5.1.1(c)(3), which states, "Buildings shall be oriented in a more perpendicular than parallel fashion to adjacent single-family homes and commercial or industrial areas." It then goes on to say in 5.1.1(c)(4), "Where parallel orientation is necessary, building setbacks shall be increased." The Commercial, Industrial, and Multifamily Design Guidelines gives the applicant the option of either placing the building perpendicular or parallel, but requires increased setbacks in a parallel orientation. Staff worked with the applicant on the location of this building. The minimum setback for the south property line is 20 feet, and that is highlighted with the green line on the map. The building is proposed to be placed 28 feet from the south property line at the western portion of the building. The western portion of the building is located adjacent to an existing detention pond and no single-family homes. As the building moves to the east, the setback increases up to 36 feet. The building setback almost doubles adjacent to the existing single-family homes. Building Eight is proposed directly north of three existing homes within Village on the Green subdivision. Based on the approved plot plans for the homes, the westernmost house is set back 40 feet from the rear property line. The second house in is 25 feet from the rear property line, and the third house in is 15 feet from the rear property line. The third house will be located the closest to the new structure, with a distance of 51 feet between the two buildings. In addition, the Commercial, Industrial, and Multifamily Design Guidelines states the following. Within section 5.2.1, "Building mass shall be suitable relative to both lot size and setbacks. Height may also be stepped down adjacent to single-family homes to provide a visual transition." Based on this criteria, the proposed building adjacent to Village on the Green subdivision includes a step-down design. The building is three stories on the west side of the building, and steps down to two stories on the east side of the building. In addition, the applicant is proposing the installation of mature trees between the existing single-family homes and building number eight. This will help mitigate visual impacts. The proposed trees are bristlecone pine trees that installation will be approximately 12 to 16 feet in height. The Land Development Ordinance requires trees to be a minimum of six feet in height. Evergreen trees were selected to help provide year-round screening. And this concludes the questions that were asked for additional information.
Additional questions for Stacy?
Yes, I do. I know the town guidelines or master plan calls for single-family, multifamily, an 80/20 ratio, so I'd like to know what the ratio was at the end of 2016. And then I have a couple more questions after that.
All right, so we did an analysis not too long ago about the multifamily, single-family ratio within the town of Parker. We currently have 20 percent multifamily, 4 percent townhomes, with 76 percent single-family within the town, and that is-
That's currently?
Yes.
So at what point do they become or come into that figure, once they've asked for a permit to be issued, or once they're approved by the Planning Commission, or what is that process?
So I guess I should probably add a clarification. The master plan doesn't set forth a percentage of a goal or a percentage of single-family versus multifamily. It does discuss kind of over time. So we have 2005 data, 2010 data, and the 2016 data. It talks about what those percentages are at any given time, but there's no goal set forth in the master plan about what those percentages should be.
Okay. Can you repeat those percentages again?
So the percentages we have is 20 percent multifamily, 4 percent townhomes, and 76 percent single-family.
In the multifamily, what does that include, apartments and condos?
Right, correct.
That's it.
Other questions?
Okay, Stacy, I'm just a little bit confused. Which one prevails, 5.1(c)(3) or 5.1(c)(4)? Because where it says where parallel orientation is necessary, necessary for whom and necessary for what? And I mean, which one is prevails? So does it mean that, for example, one c)(4) prevails c)(3)? That if by site plan, you cannot put it more perpendicular, then c)(4) takes effect, and you just need to increase? I'm just trying to understand the logic, because, you know, for me, c)(3) and c)(4) kind of contradict to each other. It looks like c)(4) overrides c)(3). Is it correct? Or because I'm just, you know, I'm confused by wording, because logically, it just doesn't make sense to me, but-
So what we look at when we get to these is the property as a whole. So we look at all the regulations, all the requirements, parking, roadway layout, and how that all fits on the property. And we want all of the parking to be interior to the site. We don't want the parking to be exterior to the site. So that's one thing, and then you have the drive aisles, and what you really do is you look at the lot fit, and how do you place these buildings on the property? Where do you put the parking to meet our code? And then meeting that code, how do the buildings fit? That's usually the last thing that's put on the property. And so with the layout that you want the parking interior, you want those accessways, it's really, then you look at this as, okay, it could be perpendicular or parallel, but how do you meet the intent of this code? And that's how we came to the design layout that we currently have.
So basically, it's up to applicant or staff to decide the orientation of the building? And then, you know, in this question, why it was necessary to put it, you know, parallel, not perpendicular, for Building Eight? Why was it just to put more units? Or, I mean, what is the rationale? That's what I'm trying to understand.
So we really look at the site, so you have to look at the whole site, again, holistically. So you're looking at the site. This is an irregular-shaped site, so it's kind of like a kidney bean shape almost. So you have that, and then the single family is obviously located on the south side with the other single family across J. Morgan. So looking at the site, and then making sure it meets all the requirements, and then having that parking interior. So you look at if that building was turned perpendicular, how does it affect the placement of the parking and the drive aisles, and then what does that single family now look at? And so that's really what we looked at here, and how do you make the best fit of the property with the least amount of impact?
And if I may add, these are guidelines, not standards. So when you ask which one overrides, it's the guidelines create and guide us to which one is the proper one to choose. So one doesn't override the other, it's how it fits within all of the guidelines together.
But I mean, basically, you have both options, right? And both options are in compliance with the code?
Correct. So there are two options in terms of how to approach it?
We're kind of equal, right? And so what you're trying to say, that Building Eight is in compliance with the code?
That was the staff interpretation, was that Building Eight was in compliance with the code.
Then I have, you know, a couple more questions. With regards to in the staff report, so Ironstone Condes, 372 units, is it correct?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
How many units, you know, in Ironstone HOA? 372, correct?
Currently constructed within the Ironstone condominiums. I have that written down right here. Yes.
So how many houses Village on the Green?
379. Well, 379 is what's currently constructed within Ironstone.
Okay, so Village on the Green, how many houses?
I don't know off the top of my head.
372, Village on the Green, 85.
Eighteen?
Eighty to eighty-five.
And then Stro Ranch HOA, how many units? 1286. Okay, I'm done.
Further questions for Stacy?
No.
All right, then we will close the public hearing at 7:18. Planning Commission discussion?
Well, I just want to thank all of you for coming out, voicing your opinions and your concerns, and doing so in a professional manner. I hope you will do so on other projects that come before the Planning Commission and Town Council that may not be in your backyard, but within the town of Parker. And I've been on the Planning Commission for a year and a half. Before I was selected on the Planning Commission, I did attend some Town Council meetings. I did, thought I did knew some things about the process, but I found out I knew very little. So I've learned a great deal about the processes, the laws, the guidelines, the ordinances, the design standards that we have to adhere to for the various items that come before the Planning Commission and the Town Council to be approved or rejected. So I encourage all of you to get more involved with the town government, to learn for yourself what these processes are. And we as the Planning Commission have to rely on the town staff to provide us with pertinent and accurate information as it pertains to a project. We all know there will probably never be a 100 percent of everyone in agreement on a project. There are a number of elements the Planning Commission must consider for a site plan review, which we are looking at tonight. One such element is to consider only evidence presented at the public hearing. That is the relevant facts and criteria contained in the town code. So we evaluate an application, town staff reports, and referral comments. In some cases, an approval may be granted pending specific criteria or conditions to be completed or met by an applicant. And if those criteria or conditions are not met, then the project will not be approved or considered approved. Looking at all the prior actions through the years from 1984 to 2004 by the different Town Councils and Planning Commissions, approving the Stro Ranch development and the current site plan amendment requests, the current land development ordinances either meet or exceed the Town Building Development and Planning Code requirements and are consistent with other apartment projects approved in the past. I believe this project has met the approval, or in some cases, a no-comment from the various agencies that will be supplying services to this project. And a no-comment response, I take, is not an objection, but an approval. Some of these include the Police Department, the Fire Department, Parker Water, Douglas County School District, Excel, IREA. Yes, some of these agencies do state for their approval that certain conditions have to be met. Otherwise, they will not approve, put their approval on this project. So with that being said, I think the right thing to do is to support and approve this project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo the sentiment of thanking the public for being here tonight and a month ago. I'd also like to say thank you to the planning staff, because if you understand, I think most of us in this room do understand, that this particular site plan amendment could have been approved or disapproved administratively within the department. They chose the option, which they have under our code, to kick it up, if you will, to the Planning Commission, so that we can have these hearings and we can have the input from the public. I believe that's a good thing, and I think that the input that you all had has been a good thing. Now, we have heard and read and contemplated much information recently about this application for a site plan amendment. The criteria we must apply to such a request are pretty straightforward and relate to the actual design, layout, and compliance with the various design guidelines, and other criteria that govern a multifamily development in our community. During the public comment portion of the meeting on November 9th, we heard many comments that were specific to the criteria we can consider, and also many that did not. Some of the comments that were not really technical in nature, but that I have spent some time reviewing and contemplating were around the questions posed about whether this site plan will result in the, quote, "type of community," unquote, we want, and specifically whether it is in compliance with the 2035 master plan. There were many comments from the public that night about this issue. I believe as a Planning Commission, it is appropriate to at least consider these types of questions as we review the more technical requirements of this application. Many public comments quoted portions of the 2035 master plan to try and make the case that this development site plan did not measure up. References were made to section 5.4, where it states Parker should, quote, "preserve our single-family neighborhoods," unquote. But as I read further in that section, it also states that we should do this, quote, "while providing choices," unquote. Section 8.7 states Parker should, quote, "protect the character of our existing residential neighborhoods," unquote. A question this brought to my mind is, does this mean that we should not have any multifamily? While reading further in that same section, it states that we should, quote, "improve the physical appearance and design of multifamily housing developments," unquote. Section 2.3 of the 2035 Plan states, "The master plan will not change the existing zoning that was already approved." My point being that as I contemplate whether this site plan fits within the vision our town has expressed, I do not believe that multifamily development in a place that has been zoned for this purpose is in conflict with that vision. When I put this in context of the many study sessions and discussions this body has had about the percentage of single-family versus multifamily homes in our town, planned from our very beginning, and it was hit on earlier, some of the percentages, somewhere around 80 percent single-family and 20 percent multifamily has been kind of where this town has targeted to try and land, and it seems like we're landing pretty close to that. This development seems to fit that model, especially given the timing of the original zoning and how it relates to the original long-term plan that was approved for our town. So all this then brings me back to the technical guidelines and the decision before us about a specific site plan. The main question for me is, does this plan meet the technical requirements that we must consider in making our decision? As I looked at the proposed site plan and the multifamily design guidelines, I found I really have only one potential area where I question the plan. We've covered some of this, but I'll go ahead and state this again. It relates to the placement of Building Number Eight. This is the building on the south end of the proposed development. Our design guidelines state, as stated before in section 5.1.1(c)(3), quote, "Buildings shall be oriented in a more perpendicular than parallel fashion to adjacent single-family homes and commercial or industrial areas," unquote. Section 5.1.1(c)(4) states, quote, "Where parallel orientation is necessary, building setbacks shall be increased," unquote. I believe the proposed site plan meets all the other criteria we can consider. The developer has also addressed the issue with Building Number Eight, as noted in the staff report. However, this is an area where I believe we have some room for judgment based on the wording and intent of the design standards.
I very much want to thank everyone, as my two previous fellow commissioners have, for coming out both of these meetings. I agree very much with what both Rich and Dwayne have had to say. It should be pointed out that this project will and must adhere to the Town of Parker Building and Development Codes, that it has met the nine criteria, and that the applicant has agreed to with staff the 12 conditions as presented in staff's report. Projects like this always create concern. I feel it's a good, solid, multifamily unit that finishes out a development that has been approved for in excess of 20 years. And it's just come and gone because of the economy surrounding what was going on in the entire metropolitan area, not just Parker. And so with that being said, I think from my point, I will be supporting this as a site plan amendment, as requested by staff and the applicant.
Do you want to go next? I just will try to speak slower, so everybody can understand. You know, guys, first of all, I just want to express my gratitude that you showed up on November 9th, and you showed up today. I was born and grew up in Moscow, Russia, and as you know, we still don't have, you know, freedom of speech. That's why, you know, I'm so grateful that here, you know, in Parker, you can come and express your opinion, and we can deliberate staff. As Gary mentioned, we are in quasi-judicial duty, and quasi-judicial decision-making requires applying the law to the facts and coming to logically supportable decisions. However, not all facts are equal, and it is the duty of decision-makers to weigh facts and determine their probative value. Staff report is a good starting point, because it identifies all relevant facts available at a given point in time. Neighborhood opposition to project, standing alone without reference to facts relevant to a decision, is not a legitimate basis for denial of land use application. Quasi-judicial hearings are not popularity contests, but forums for gathering relevant facts that will help us to comply with local codes. If somebody comes before the Planning Commission to request an exception to the plans, it's not within the commission power to decide whether or not the plans are right. The plans have been made. It is the commission duty to act in quasi-judicial manner to determine a proposal compliance with the plans. Nothing more, nothing less. So as, you know, resident of Parker, and I live in Parker since 2000- and I live in Parker since 2000, I really share, you know, your concerns about, you know, declining, potential declining in property values and increasing crime rates and other concerns. But as a planning commissioner, we need only to use certain conditions for site amendment plan. And I basically agree with Duane. You know, despite the discussion with staff, I'm still not quite comfortable with, basically, with parallel, it's mostly parallel, location of Building 8. And, you know, because the guidance is confusing. And again, from logical standpoint, from critical reasoning standpoint, it just doesn't, you know, doesn't make sense. But, you know, that's the kind of first red flag. A second red flag is, you know, traffic study. And as staff mentioned, one elementary school, Gold Rush Elementary, was on spring break when they conducted roadway counts. And, you know, in engineering, bias is a systematic error. And statistical bias result from unfair sampling of population. So, I mean, I have engineering background. And, you know, in my personal opinion, that one school, or maybe even more, were on spring break, then it means that the statistics is not right. And, you know, I can, I think the actual amount of traffic was undervalued. The reason why I asked for number of units for Strow Ranch, Ironstone, and Village of the Green. So in traffic study report, it says that 204 proposed units that Dominion is going to build will generate 1,357 trips. So if we will do simple math, 1,357 divided by 204, it gives us 6.65 per unit. So now let's add, you know, 379 Ironstone Condes plus 80 Village of the Green. So it gives us 459 times 6.65. It will be 3,052. They said actual traffic is 3,700. So if you take it, 3,700 minus 3,052, it gives you 647.65 divided by 1286 Strow Ranch. It means that people in Strow Ranch, they make .5 trips per day. It just doesn't make sense. You know, actual amount of traffic doesn't make sense. You know, if you do extrapolation for surrounding neighborhoods, it's, you know, that's why I am contesting the traffic study. And I think it's not correct. And so, you know.
Let's try to keep that down.
So basically, yeah, my concerns are orientation of Building 8 and traffic study. And, you know, that's, you know, that's my opinion.
Thank you all for coming out. Thank you, staff, for helping us through this process. I am the newest. I've only been on the commission for six months. This is trial by fire for me. I reviewed all the information submitted by the applicant on Tracket. I reviewed all the information that was submitted by the public. I reviewed all the zoning requirements, the site design requirements that were adopted April 17, 2015. And I would recommend that we deny the site plan amendment for the following reasons. I feel that the site plan amendment does not meet the vehicular access requirement. Section V1e2 states that multifamily development sites between 5 and 15 acres shall include a minimum of one public street or private drive of one public street or private drive that is continuous through the site and connects to a public street on both ends. The through-access drive on the site plan includes connections to J. Morgan Drive and Ironstone Way. Ironstone Way is a private road. I concur that there is a public access easement to Ironstone Way that would most likely be upheld in court. However, the design standards that the applicant has applied under stipulate a public street on both ends. The text of the requirement itself distinguishes between public streets and private drives. The writer of the guidelines could have stipulated a connection to public access, but he did not. Additionally, if Ironstone Way is considered a public road, then applicant would have placed a sidewalk along the roadway as required under the pedestrian access requirement. However, applicant's site plan has placed parking next to Ironstone Way. The argument has also been made that the requirement of connection to the public road is being made via Ironstone Way to J. Morgan Boulevard to the north. I do not find this sufficient to meet the requirement. There is a difference between a public access easement and a right to use a private road to meet the design requirements. A public access easement allows through travel by the public. However, here, the applicant intends to create parking all along this roadway. This is a greater intensity of use than through travel. For this, I believe applicant would have to show a vested right to use the roadway in this manner. I have reviewed the ALTA survey submitted by the applicant. It does not show any such rights by the current owner of the property that could be passed on to the applicant at time of purchase. Therefore, I find that the site plan does not meet the design requirements. And therefore, I would recommend the Planning Commission deny the Strow Ranch filing, Number 1 Amendment, Number 2 Lot 5 Site Plan Amendment. And I will provide a copy of this to Rosemary, and I ask that they be included verbatim in the meeting minutes.
I'm not going to quote code because I've read enough code since November 5th when I picked up a packet. By the way, for those of you that say we don't do anything, this is what we have to read. I'm not as smart as the last speaker, but I thank staff for what they do and I thank you all for showing up twice now. I know it's a busy time of year. I'm personally somewhat biased only because I hear some of the cries of what people have said. And I understand the whys. But I also understand that this was something done and approved long before. I think I lived in New York when this started, so I wasn't here. For those of you that have been here, I'm sure you've seen the changes of Parker, good or bad. I have two issues that I want to make sure are noted. One is the placement of Building Number 8. I do have a question as to why that even... The placement of it is questionable from my design, from my aspect of the design. And I would also request that possibly the traffic study be done again, perhaps at a different time when the schools are in and people in Parker are in full force. And the only reason why I question that is because I think it was a slightly subjective timeframe to do it in. And I would request that it would be done at much, when schools, all schools are in. I don't, I'm not going to say one way or another, but I do think that, for the most part, everything else that has been asked of the individuals applying for this, they have consented to. And I think that has to be taken into consideration as well. Thank you all again.
Okay. I too have, not going to be redundant and restate what commissioners have already said, but spent time reviewing this proposal, reviewing aerial photographs of the area. You know, I shop at the grocery store over there, so I'm familiar with the area. So as I look at, again, our job, and our job, as I think others have stated more eloquently than I, is to look at the testimony that we've heard. And I have found that the testimony given seems to be that the applicant has met the criteria as set out by the town. And so I will be voting in favor of this. Further discussion?
So is it appropriate to ask staff a question to clarify on this roadway now? We're passing it?
We're passing it.
Okay. Very well. Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission approve the Strow Ranch filing, Number 1, Amendment Number 2, Lot 5 Site Plan Amendment with the 12 conditions contained in staff's report.
I'll second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Duane. Does the Planning Commission approve the Strow Ranch filing, Number 1, Amendment Number 2, Lot 5 Site Plan Amendment? Signify your approval by yes.
Yes.
No. No.
Motion passes 5 to 2. Our Planning Commission, any further items from the town staff?
No, sir, there are not.
All right, then we will adjourn the meeting at 7:42.